I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Pillar, would you mind saying a few words?
Please follow your heads. Dear Heavenly Father, we just pray that you watch over the events of tonight's meeting, that you can guide us in our thoughts and the direction that we need to take as representatives of this fine community that we live in. We just thank and praise you for all the gifts that you give us, in the name of prayer.
Thank you. All right. If you could approve the minutes from the August 5th meeting. Any changes, there are revisions, corrections?
Motion to approve is standing in.
Motion by Wolf to approve. Second by Hack. Discussion. All favor of approving the minutes, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. All right, approve of the agenda. Any changes or additions, corrections? Now I take a motion to approve the agenda.
The motion to approve the agenda is presented.
Motion by Pillar. Second by Stern. Discussion. All in favor of the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Thank you. Agenda approved. 5A, engineers' reports. Jared, you want to fill in up?
Sure will. Sean, copy my report in front of you here. We'll get through the street project stuff and then we'll take 10 minutes and go through the water system discussion that we were talking about last meeting. So, 2018, 2019, street projects. Basically where we're at right now is the chip ceiling is done, the pavement markings are done. We have a payment estimate in front of you tonight that's cap number nine for MAO Construction. That'll be the semi-final payment. So, we're paying them for all the work now, all their subs have done things, and we're holding the retainedage. So wherever this cursor is there, you can see we're holding $275,000 until we can do the final close-up. Can't do the final close-up until they need to complete all the punch list items. So we have a significant punch list. Most of it, they can clean up stuff. The president's on the grid, they've got their valve covers and manholes that are still covered in oil and rocks and chip and seating establishments. Not uncommon for this time with other projects, but they've done all the work. We won't pay them until they're done with the cleanup stuff. I'd recommend payment now. You know, caught up minus retainedage. So I'd recommend approval of contractors' application for payment number nine.
Any questions for Jared?
Yes, sir.
At the last call, you know, we talked about holding back some money maybe? You know, for the work that was done in various, you're in the six side parts of town.
Okay.
Are we still gonna do that, or?
We've, right now, the back page, it's the adjustment to payment. It's pulling about 38, 37, $38,000. And we find the contractor for that patching stuff, yeah.
Okay.
Right now, we're not paying them. And if we approve the payment as if next month, we won't pay them for that stuff. One other thing's on my list that, keeping in mind to potentially deduct would be some discussion over some survey monuments that may have been hit. Ron InterTech testing allowance, or testing fee because of contaminated water. And then they completed the work late last fall for the milestone completion date last fall. They were like 12 or 14 days beyond completion date last fall. We haven't deducted any money for, from them for things, but all items we need to address before closing on the project.
Any other questions?
There's ample funding, I'm assuming, in our retainedage then to cover anything that we might withhold.
Yes. Times five.
Okay.
Any other questions, comments?
Motion to approve payment.
Motion by Wolf to approve. Second by Stern. Discussion. Roll call. Wolf.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Pillar.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Blowenauer.
Aye.
Motion carried.
John Schor will be in town for Wednesday. Goal for Wednesdays is to just run through punch list, maybe meet with Dave. Just try and see, look for anything out of the ordinary. He'll look at the rest of those ADM locations where block corners may have been hit. Just kind of go through things, spend a good day. Other thing he was gonna do is, he's gonna talk to Monty about how to get a quote to televise that block on Fifth Street where the manhole got put in. We think it's that asbestos cement pipe water main. I've not done anything with that yet. It's not urgent, but it's something we need to figure out what's going on on that block. Again, we think it's a water main that got repurposed for a sewer main. And so you have a manhole now, so we can't televise that line to see what the condition is if they have these. So I would expect that, you know, we'll try and help you get a quote from someone who's in televising. If there's some work going on east of here, some televising crews. So John will be here Wednesday. You have a whole list of things that we kind of need to go through and get ironed out here with you guys. Expedition Estates, next thing on my list. Last time I was here, the contractor had dug up and repaired one of the locations. Since that time, they have not done a lot of work. The excavator's still sitting there. And they had requested the televising tapes that were originally submitted post-construction. So both Monty and I get sent it back to them. The issues on the punch list are, there's some issues with the pipe. We've got some squashed pipe. It's, I call it out-of-round pipe. When we do things with flexible pipe, we make them do a mandrel test and a televising at the end to make sure that they didn't crush the pipe. And so we found a couple of locations that are squashed. And we found another spot where there's exposed gaskets. When pipes don't get pushed all the way home, we can get an exposed gasket. So according to what you guys are hearing, what I've been told is they're gonna try and have a trenchless pipe company come in and fix those spots so they don't have to dig them up. If they do it to an acceptable standard, that would be fine. We'll make them televise it again when they're done and prove that it's acceptable. And I guess, we've had good luck with it, doesn't always work. So the camera will be the final judge, yeah.
Is that over-compression? Is that why it squashes it, or?
Usually. Yeah.
So it's compacted that hard, how are they gonna expand it with that?
I've never personally used one of these trenchless companies to fix an out-of-round pipe. I've had them fix segs though. So if they've got significant seg, they'll, these companies, I mean, they'll extend something through the pipe and either vibrate it or shake it to try and fix that. I don't know if they can or not. That's just what I was told. Nobody has submitted anything to me saying, here's what we're gonna do. It's mostly just word of mouth right now. But normally you have to dig it up and then recompact it in small lifts, being more careful. But it's not crushed. Crushed would be really bad. A little squished is probably a little easier to fix. No payments, just enough payment there. The last thing I have is the water system amendments. And I've got Tyrell Clark with more engineering here too. He's, Tyrell's been in the area working on water tower here from the Clean Share and Water District. He was the author of the amendment that we sent up earlier today. He heads up our water wastewater group. So I'll just stand up here and answer the technical questions. I gave Monty a short PowerPoint that'll just help us run through our report. You've got a copy of the report. We're calling it Amendment Number One to 2012 Water Capacity Study. So I'll take it as study 2012. And they identified the issues within the water system. Mostly related to system pressures. This, again, this PowerPoint is just meant to give you like the executive summary of this. It's not very long, please read it, it's only six pages long with some graphs and some charts. I'll start off and then hand it over to Tyrell when he gets to some of the actual, the difference between the options. So, as you know, you've been on the State Water Commission Planning List for a long time for water system improvements. And that's to address those things that were discovered in 2012 by Altay. Most notably, system pressures. What you have in your system, a water system works in a group of four. Letting one of the systems fail, you know, makes the whole system fail. So we've got supply and treatment on one side, obviously supplied by selfless water. Distribution is your hundreds of blocks of water mains throughout the system. All size appropriately, pressure and flow based on the land use in those areas. And then we've got storage. Water storage provides capacity in those times of emergency or peak uses in the morning and the afternoons when people are cooking, showering, or washing lots. So the point of the water storage in your system is to meet your demands throughout the day. Because selfless water can't meet those demands. They supply you water continuously throughout the 24-hour period and then your water telesquats is up and down. So, Altay's study 2012, basically identified issues at the north and south ends of your system. Your community, if you think of flood purposes, is like a hole. Middle of town, along the rivers, the lower part, and as you go up the hill to the north and south. And that's where we climb out of the valley. And the pressures, pressures are related, I'm getting this just second. The low-pressure problems are the north and south. And that's a shaded line on our map here, that's what this is. It shows, the red areas, darker areas, show the high-end little parts of town. And that's just, that, on the next map, I'll show you, it shows where the problems are at. Okay, pressure elevation and flow. We'll just talk about this real quick before maybe this answers some questions that the public might have. Pressure elevation and flow are different. It's hard to think of them as different if you're not used to working with this kind of thing. But what we're focused mostly on here is pressure, because pressure can be related to elevation. And your tank is a 40-foot-tall tank that sits on a hill. Same thing as having a water tower, but it's a tank that sits on a hill. The higher elevation we provide that tank, the higher water pressure we have in town. So every 2.31 feet of elevation equals 1 PSI. Or 150-foot-tall tank or tower, whatever we have, would provide about 65 PSI of pressure. We have a 40-foot-tall tank that sits on a medium-sized hill. We, what we really need is to serve the entire community, that tank just to be about 50 feet taller. Or to be sitting on 50-foot-tall, higher hill, excuse me. There's a number of ways to address that. Again, this is Altay's study, identifying the problem areas. This was about seven years ago. Same principles apply. Nothing wrong with the way they did their study. It's just, the intent of this is to take their recommendations of adding a water tower and developing five options. Because there's a lot of different options when it comes to elevated storage. There's, you know, low cost upfront, higher cost later. So what we like to do is just give you the whole picture and do a life cycle cost analysis. Cheaper today might not be cheaper for the citizens five years from now. Versus spending a little bit more right now and spending a little less, you know, as the years go on. Well, we'll show you the capital costs of the options and then talk about the life cycle cost at the end. So, Monty, would you go ahead and one more slide there, sorry. So the options that we presented in the report are recoding, okay. I failed to mention this at the beginning. You guys have an inspection company do an evaluation of your tank containers. Coatings on water tanks have life expectancy. You have a welded steel tank, which is about the mid-level quality of tanks. It goes from a glass-lined bolted tank to a welded steel tank to a concrete tank as far as quality. Higher quality lasts longer. So you had an inspection done on your tank in 2015 and in 2019. And it shows some slight deterioration in the coatings, which is what we expect. Coating should last about 20 years. On the inside of the tank, 20 is about the maximum life. On the exterior of the tank, 20 can be stretched, sometimes it can be power washed and overcoated. But for a rule of thumb, you should expect about 20-year life on tanks. Some of the new ones we do now, we push that. But if you see this tank and you look at the inspection report, there's some, starting to get to be some coating failures and some pitting on the inside. You notice the outside is severely faded. You don't have a project you have to do right this moment, but you have an impending coating replacement project probably in the next five years, let's say. And so for the basis of this discussion, we're taking that into account. Because coating replacements are very expensive. You don't wanna spend a whole pile of money doing that and like that, it didn't fix all of your problems, so. Anyways, so the options we'd like to have are recoding your existing tank, raising your existing tank, building a continuous booster pump station that would run and just boost the pressure in town via pumps with variable frequency drives. Basically that would just run 24 hours a day and provide pressure throughout the city. It's how a lot of small cities operate that don't have water towers. Replace the tank, replace with a ground storage tank where it is, or replace the ground tank at a higher elevation. So I'm gonna let Tyrell kind of talk a little bit about these things. And we won't keep you here all night, but he's the, he's the expert.
Where's that from in that?
Yeah.
This is, this is the thing. We want to include the recoding of the existing tank. It doesn't fix your pressure problems, because that means it's the same tank you have today. But it helps give a baseline comparing all of the other alternatives. I would anticipate that would include blasting and coating and then the guys you can see there. As Jared said, it's not a today-type issue, but it's also not 30 years down the road. It would need to be done in the medium term, we'll call it. Get the next one. We looked at raising the existing tank. Due to the height that we would need to gain, it's about 40 feet tall today. We would need another 50 feet on top of that, just not feasible with the steel that it would take to get that done. To get that tank up that tall. New pump station would boost the grade line from, if your elevated tank is here, you can bring the water out of the tank and pump it up to a higher grade line, kind of artificially putting your water up. Imagine it as if it were up at a higher tank. Would work, but then it would have the ongoing operation and maintenance cost. You're changing out pump seals, you're paying for electricity, you're paying for heat in the, in the building. You gotta maintain the building on the roof and go, it just adds some infrastructure. And then as we get into costs, we'll see it's cheaper on the upfront, but as you look long-term, you start to pay a little more. We can go elevated tank as well. And elevated tanks are pretty flexible, because these stems can be pretty much whatever height you want them to be. This can be 50 feet, it can be 100 feet. So if you move it up and down the hill in your town, you can stick that about where you want it. The 750,000 gallon that you have now is right around on the border between the steel-spheroide ones that you'll see and the composite ones with the concrete tank and the steel right here. If we were to move forward with an elevated, I'd probably suggest that we build both side by side. Because it might come down to something as simple as concrete prices during bidding or something like that. And that's assuming being at a relatively close to the same land elevation that we are with the existing water tower.
Ah, so give me the next slide, we can talk about that. So if this is your existing tank right here, we did some elevation calculations and surprise, surprise, came about with the same pressures that were in the Altay report. You have two low pressures. And it can't be fixed without getting that tank up higher. So that can be done a couple of different ways. One, we could go elevate it and get either that spheroid or the composite tank and get it up to the grade we want it to. Or then the other option that we're gonna talk about is, instead of building a tank here, build it higher up the hill. And we also, we haven't got the ground storage at the existing site either. As we get into that, that could possibly be done, but as you can see, it's really tall and skinny. So you end up having issues in that style of tank that, called standpipes in the industry, as you read through the report. Trouble with these standpipes is you end up not being able to mix this water. And so they, they freeze at the top, they have disinfectant residual problems. That water just gets, just stays up there, moves in and out rather than being mixed around. And causes you grief. In extreme conditions, it can cause taste and odor problems. Like the citizens, as they're drinking the water, it tastes funny, it smells funny. So generally stay away from standpipes, but this movement up the hill could be a pretty viable option. The next.
So then, so then if we go back on, so then on the lowest home, we'd have about 80 then, like PSI?
Mm-hmm. Yeah, 10 states need, the maximum minimums in 10 states are 35 to 100. Recommended is 60 to 80. And so that's why I kind of kept it around that 80 neighborhood. It's a possibility that as we're going through design and working through the details of it, we might go to 82 or 83. But, but this high level shows that, yeah, we're good. If this number had come out to be like 130, okay, we gotta back up, come up with a new solution. But being in that 80 neighborhood, give me good warm fuzzies about this plan.
And it, it basically takes, if you look at the report, look at the PowerPoint, for low pressure, it raises everybody's pressure about 20 PSI. So if you're in the high parts of town and you get significant low pressure, we'll fix it to put it in that window where we should be. Throughout the lower flying areas, it'll get up towards that higher end where it shouldn't be.
Can I answer that question?
No. No.
Kind of hit on the standpipe tank. If we stuck with, or if we went a 750,000 gallon diameter, you'd only be able to use that top portion. Otherwise you're back in the, if you cycle it way deep, you get back to your same pressure problems as the water level goes down. So you could go bigger and get that same diameter. The trouble with that is now you're up to 1.9 million gallons at that same diameter, 100 feet tall. Too much water, you're not gonna turn it over, you'd have even more freezing issues. And then the cost of that would, would be pretty astronomical in comparison to the other, the other issues. This is just kind of visual representation to scale. This is about your, well, I think our TV might be distorted out of hair, but kind of close to scale on the width versus the height. And then you can see how much taller and skinnier a 750 would need to be to make that happen. Concrete tanks are, I said new, relatively new, 20, 30-year-old type technology. They come out, pour ground, pour a floor of the tank on the ground, very reinforced. You can see a lot of rebar in there. They're beside a dragway, get poured, a lot more rebar in one of these guys. They pour these in pieces, get the next one. And then they tilt them up into place. And then with a pre-stress tank, probably can't see, but this guy is wrapping wires around the tank. So if you can imagine piece, 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 all the way around. And then wire pushing everything together. So then as the water goes in and pushes out, that kind of counteracts those forces. And then they come in and shotcrete everything to protect that steel. It's a really long-lasting tank. No one town that I've worked in, that's, they, they don't do anything besides pre-stress concrete tanks because of longevity and the lack of maintenance. And they end up being pretty sharp looking. At least from my aesthetic standpoint. This is a finished one down Harvey, North Dakota, where we did the tank and the pump station. In Hazen, we wouldn't need the pump station, it would just be the tank. But this gives you a sense of what the tank looks like. You end up with a hatch, overflow ladders to get up on and be able to do whatever you might need to do from the top of the tank. And this is that same figure that we've been looking at to show kind of how the elevations would work. But it requires getting up that hill. So did calculations, what would that hill need to be? Can we find that hill? And there's a few places around the town. This is the location of the existing tank. I was looking for contours of 1880. And three of them here, and then as we continue up this road, there's another spot here that's a potential viable option. Now, we need a pipe to connect to the, to the existing distribution system. But the elevation is there to make this happen. And then we did costs on the various options. As we mentioned, we put the recode in as kind of a baseline. This is sort of where we are today with our current system to continue forward. Just the normal maintenance of that tank is gonna be the, that $900,000. This also includes some of the things we've talked about with the.
On each of the options, we include $180,000 to decommission your existing water contract and make it reusable. So it's been brought up a bunch of times. Is there any money out there to address that? Can we, you know, any loans, any grants, whatever? If you go forward with a water system project, tacking something like that onto a project like this makes a lot of sense. Especially when you're going after grant. So on each of these, they're inflated by $108,000 because of that decommissioning of the water.
So if you're seeing that $900,000 thing, that looks pricey, yeah, you're right, it does. In part because of that.
But the $900,000 is nothing for our pressures.
Right. Yeah, it would, if you would the existing tank, you'd still be at that same problem. So then we ordered the, the next three that were still viable, the pump station, concrete tank, and elevated tank at 1.6, 2.7, and 3.7 respectively. Like we talked about in the beginning, pump stations in the near term today, capital cost would be a cheaper option. But as we look to the long-term costs, the pump station, and this kind of has a twofold effect. One, the pump station itself, you're replacing controls about every 20 years. You maintain your pumps, your roof goes bad, your heat has to be paid. Those types of maintenance items add up. There's also the steel tank. Because if you do the pump station option, your tank that's there today would still need to be recoded every 20 years. So you've got those two maintenance items.
So then is that, is that, I guess, included? And then it's like 1.6, you guys have the coating on a tank?
Yes.
Okay, so it's included, okay.
Trying to compare them apples to apples, we, we stuck in the coating project with the pump station. So then we have the elevated tank that's up here and just stays up there, because it's got that steel. It's gonna need a recoat, just like your ground storage tank today needs a recoat. So it could be done, but cost is really high up there. This is just if you stick with your existing tank, obviously the cost is down, but you don't fix your pressure issue. You still have that problem. This green line coming across here is the concrete tank. It starts towards the middle, like we saw in the last slide, of the costs. But because you're not doing a recoat project every 20 years, that cost stays fairly flat. There is some maintenance to them, and this reflects on, you might be able to see, maybe not. There's a slight grade on that, but not nearly as much as if you're recoding a steel tank. So this is the straight life cycle cost. And then if we reflect on the 60% grant, which is fairly typical on this kind of project, correct me if I'm saying something wrong with that, Jared. The cost to the city changes quite a bit. And where, where before, the cost crossed the line at about 30 years. If we, if we put that 60% grant in, it crosses at about 10 years. So this is more reflective of the cost to the city for doing that type of project.
Yeah, so now I'll just wrap this up here, sorry.
No, I was gonna ask you about that.
So we, to us, doing a little more of the Cadillac water storage option that is zero maintenance, is zero expense going forward, especially when you've got opportunity to get very high net percentages, seems to be the best choice. So we're recommending that if you do proceed with the water system project, we locate a spot with a little higher elevation. We go with concrete tank and basically forget about it. You don't pump today, you wouldn't have to pump with this. Selfless water has enough pressure in their system to supply a taller tank. We look at that. So water system project, it's eligible and you qualify, but the problem is money. Every biennial, they set a budget for municipal water supply projects. And right now, you were contacted telling you if you're interested, get your application in, because. Telling you if you're interested, get your application in because they they're taking applications. I would say that every two years, there's a chance to get money for this. And you might get told no, they're out of money right now. But um you gotta have applications in forty-five days before the next state water commission meeting, so in the next couple of weeks. And then you'd know if you're on the funding list or not. Um so two point seven million dollars. We would project then sixty percent of that or one point six billion to come from the state water commission. I just threw the parade duck stuff in there because I know your local share then would be a little over a million bucks. And you're in line to get about eight hundred and fifty or nine hundred thousand dollars next year. Could be a use for it if you get the funding next year. Um if if not, you know, it could be four years out. Could be six years out, but hard to say when that's going to come. And that's it. So questions, who do they do it?
So on that elevation, you need, where it's further north of the existing tank, how much further north is that?
About half a mile, two, twenty-seven hundred feet, is what you said. And of course, each side is a little bit different. If you go further to the west, it's a little more. The the one straight north of town and then those two that are right around this gully.
Were right about twenty-seven hundred feet.
And of course, that's going to be impacted by where we can run the pipe, get easements, details like that.
So your your costs included pipeline?
Yes.
But not acquisition of land?
We put in forty thousand dollars for land acquisition.
How many acres would we need?
Not very much.
Two, three?
We did the one in Lemore, uh one fifty by one fifty site, I think, which is what we, three quarters of acre. You need, we need an easement, you know, a white easement to dig in a pipeline. And then we'll probably have a small access road on top of that pipe. Small, I mean, if we can get an acre, it'd probably be great. If we can't, it's probably a little less. We want a fence around it. I've seen cities go both ways on that. You have a fence around yours today. Simple. It's up to you guys. The hatches are always locked. We always lock the ladder you saw along up. The bottom of that is locked, so you can't get around it. And then it's, we make them so they're smooth so you can't climb the outside of them.
People do that?
I don't know, I've seen it on TV shows. So you've been on the state water commission planning list for a long time for the water tower. And this intention of this was to vent. The five or six different options as far as water, tower, tank, pumping system goes. So that, you know, we looked at different locations, elevation styles. Our recommendation used to build a concrete tank because it would hire capital costs and then no maintenance going forward.
And we would try to get eighty percent, ninety percent of the paperwork from the parade dog and grant, grants.
If you choose to use your money for that.
So it would be reasonable, obviously, looking at that that plot that you had there, the one that's straight up to the north. That's going to give you your shortest path to tie into the existing infrastructure. So that would.
Of this back?
Yeah, I don't know what the difference in elevation of those three circles on the left hand side are.
This was all looking for hills that are at that eighteen eighty. Now, some of them kept on going up.
Sure.
Uh like this one kept on going up, but.
But all three of those elevations are at the eighteen eighty mark. Okay. And the one that's the furthest to to the east there. Would be the most, no, well, in in your mind, which one, which which is going to be the most economical for the project itself?
Either of those two.
Okay.
Are about six, one way, half dozen of the other, about the other. This one is pretty close thereafter too. So if you got head grief acquiring land here. It could be that tight that you could go up to this other side. This one's a little further out and would would need a little more height to get it connected, the one that's furthest to the west.
So if you do decide to apply, um there'll be your state water commission meeting in October, somebody from the city should attend. I would go with you. Um you submit like two page application and then. Right now, I don't think you're going to get any funding, but Blake Crosby and the city cities did contact you and tell you that you're interested. If you guys are pursuing it, you should apply because they might have some money. So I just, I don't know. It's not really anything I can say.
Well, I guess, or I guess, I don't know why we wouldn't apply for it now. Is that doable, Monty? By you? Would we need any more information from you?
I'll help Monty fill it out tomorrow if you choose to do it, and then we'll submit it and we'll plan to go to the meeting in October. And hear what they have to say as far as, I mean, they might have fifty million in applications and ten million dollars of money. We don't know. But part of the application process is submitting the report that we put together. They require a lifecycle cost analysis. So they're not spending taxpayer money stupidly. So everything you need should be in. And I think we have a week or two. Forty-five days ahead of that meeting.
So would put another concrete tank salvage the old steel from the old tank or use it as an auxiliary tank?
Usually scrap. Uh if if your preference was to keep it online, it'd be mothballed. Throw it online with with some work in the future if that was, we've done that in some towns because cities want to keep it around. Maybe getting back online would probably mean getting in there and doing some coding to work.
And I'm guessing the uh decommissioning, that thing is not a money-making venture. It's, there there would be. I mean, you got scrap salvage value for the steel, I'm assuming, but that's not going to offset the labor and everything in. Fully decommissioning something like that, would it?
To take down, I've been a couple of water tower remodels, it's been about twenty-five thousand bucks. Because they get, they make enough money to offset some of the costs.
So so then that would be about a twenty-five thousand dollar bill?
That's been on water towers. I would think a tank would be cheaper, but I don't know.
Monty, you go back at that diagram that had all the different, the different drawings of, no, that one. So guys, could our, a new tank go right east side? Right beside the old ones directly to the west of it?
Could, but that would be that stand pipe.
The other one beside it still.
You're saying that the cost for the for the the one right there. That that's that's quite substantially higher in cost.
Yeah.
And 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 such, your estimates that you had put for the concrete tank, you were taking into account. The length of the run and all that kind of stuff for for those north northwest locations, you know?
Usually the cutoff that I see, and it depends on the size of the tank, but if I can find a hill that's within about a mile. That's usually where it starts to kind of break. And so where you've got enough elevation, about a half mile. That puts you as a good candidate for, especially when you start looking long term. That mile is about apples to apples construction cost, but the concrete stays at that cost long term. Cause you don't add another five hundred thousand in twenty years, and another, and another, and another. Whereas the elevated, you do have to come in and recode those.
Any other questions or thoughts for you guys?
I guess I just have one. So this would take a lot of pressure through the entire town. So on the south end of town. They got like crowns and stuff, it would bring up that water pressure also.
I think the worst area is just where they divide, right? We would have most pumps.
Yep, so people know their pressure. I mean, in design, we're figuring fifty feet, which adds about twenty PSI. I mean, if it ends up being ten feet taller or twelve feet taller because we have to to serve something. It makes some minor adjustments. We just can't go over that maximum pressure limit in the other parts of town. So but yeah, it's just about. And it would be system wide.
Okay.
I guess this is super attractive just because we wouldn't have to special assess the citizens and we. You know, if we can get this thing almost almost all paid for, I'm sure we don't go forward. Give Monty the green light and do the paperwork and the paperwork.
And motion, Jared?
I think so. All right, we have a motion by hack to fill out paperwork for the state water commission. Grab my second. Second by Wolf. Discussion. We'll call.
Hi.
Wolf?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Stern?
Hi.
Wolf and I. All right, motion carried.
So when I report back to you, I'll just give you a status. Again, I'm not, don't be surprised if you don't get this first go around because it's. It's likely that they don't have enough money to fund all the stuff going on, but like I said, Blake had suggested to you guys that you should apply. And I, I'm sure he's suggesting to other cities as well.
Well, at least we're on the radar, right?
Well, you've been on the radar for a long time. I don't know how long you've been on the state water commission priority list for these for this project, but. It just seems like there's an opportunity and that's why we vetted the options, so.
What what do we see as a typical household water pressure in the place that they're adequately supplied right now?
If if we're going to design something.
No, just today, right now.
There were some that were as low as seventeen. Now, that's the extreme high end.
I'm just wondering, I knew it made a statement, I believe, that with this, every household would see an increase in PSI of about twenty. And, you know, I know that in my house, I've got, you know, a pressure switch in there that, you know, shuts off when I'm pressured up to a certain amount. And stuff like that. We're not, with twenty PSI increase, you're not hurting anybody.
Down where we live, we're way in case now, we're about forty-five.
Forty-five, okay.
The very low end of town was about that eighty, which is getting up towards the upper end of the recommended, but it's not above the recommended.
Eighty with the twenty added on?
With the twenty added, yes. The maximum in applicable standards is a hundred. So if you need to, you can exceed that a little bit.
I just, I just wanted to understand if we were going to have any residents that had to do something now on the flip side. Because they were getting dangerously close to overpressurizing maybe the the infrastructure of their home itself.
And so that that does happen. And in England, they just built a new water tower and some of the residents are now closer to that E D PSI. And so we're suggesting to some people to put a small pressure reducing valve into their plumbing commended house. And it's.
So if you have copper, if you have old copper pipes in your house, and you're worried about pinhole leaks, that'd be.
You may want to consider it.
And that's a recommendation to the homeowners or is the city picking up that expense in that situation?
In that case, they have a local plumber and the city bought the box of pressure reducing valves and if someone needs them, they can come get them. But the city's not paying for it. That's like, that's something you should buy in ours, you know, small pressure.
I just want to make sure I thoroughly understand when we say everybody's going to get twenty more pounds pressure, that that's a good thing, that that's a selling point. As opposed to, sorry, now you're going to have to redo the incoming of your house because you don't want to.
To wreck your water heater, it's gonna.
Wreck something up.
Could be, it could be something that we need to announce to public and tell everybody their new water pressure. There's, we we published a pressure contour map in England to show exactly what their new pressures are going to be.
For a new home. Recommendation that that says, and clearly, in in the majority of our town. You don't have as much new construction. You've got a lot that's been around for quite some time. So you've got some aged infrastructure. As as we push forward, I I don't want to be the guy waving the flag saying, hey, this is a, this is a great thing. And then all of a sudden, we start seeing all this, looking like old faithful.
Yeah, so you're exactly right. Well.
Any other questions for these guys?
I'm starting with him on.
Thank you, appreciate it.
Yes, thanks, guys.
Six A event permit, I was talking about the center hospice.
Process can draw attention because especially bed permits are generally approved just in my office. But since it is an outside vendor, they are licensed locally through the city of Buor and through the state. They did provide certificate of liability insurance. As the city hospice is contracted with them to cater the meal. And wanted them to cater the alcohol for their events as well, their fundraising.
Motion to approve.
Motion by Wolf. Second, second Mr. in discussion. We'll call.
Wolf? Hi.
Stern?
Hi.
Nick?
Hi.
Miller?
Hi.
Over to.
Hi.
Motion carried, thank you.
All right, eight A, I was hoping Shannon would be here. But we had planning and zoning met uh last week. I saw the notes and this is on. Land across by Amal Creek, Carson James Lounge owned by. Thank you, Steve Gowan. And he was asking it to be rezoned to commercial from Ag. And the zoning board voted it down to change it. So there, then it comes to us and this board has the right to overturn that if they want. Or to carry through with uh the no changes to the zoning as recommended by the zoning board. Pat, did you have anything you want to add to this first?
No, just saying, just clarifying that they make a recommendation to the city commission.
Right.
I guess I got one thing. As a city, it seems like you want to bring in like business, you know, Wade do a lot for. There's a lot of people. I'm curious, as as a city, what can we do for Wade here?
Well, what we can do for Wade versus what Mr. Gowan are two different things. Cause it's, Mr. Gowan's land. And we know that Wade wants to buy it. But obviously, we we've asked, this group has asked Wade to not run a commercial business out of his residential property anymore. We've been working with Wade on, you know, giving him time to do that. Obviously, it could have been done a while ago, but Wade asked for an extension. And we all decided to give until at least the first of the year. I would be more lenient to extend that if we had to, you know, and say, he doesn't have to move everything out of his yard at first. But if he's, obviously, he's actively looking and pursuing. One of the things I mentioned at the meeting is. I, and Wade was there, uh but it's, we've asked him to leave, move, but we're gonna say, okay, move, but not here. We want you to move, but not there. No, not here. You know, that's kind of a, you know, it's always a moving target. And it's not our responsibility to change zoning for one person or one organization or one. Business just because it's, we want to see it moved. You know, there was, you know, if you read the the notes, there are several reasons that the other board members did not want it there. But, you know, Wade made good points too on what he would want to do there. His business would be front and center on a good location. There's no, we we do not have water, sewer, or power in that location. And it's not our responsibility to bring any of that in there either. Wade said he didn't need sewer, but it was just some of the discussion points that were brought up at that meeting that day. I talked to Bill Lemire about land over here. There's area that he had any extra land to sell. Wade's been actively looking at other locations. Wade owns other land also. But I'm not sure what what our responsibility is to find a spot for a business. Absolutely, Wade.
Well, I was just wondering, you know, the the. Mr. Gowan gave me a list of stuff that the county said you could do on that property. And I think the whole deal was the the city don't want to have to pay for getting water and sewer and power in there. But I think that my business practically fits into every option that the county gives you. But I think that my business practically fits into every option that the, that the county gives you, of, of what to do, what you can do there, you know? And I have an excavated business, so I can, I can get the power in there. That's about all I need really, is the power, cause actually I just need it for storage. Like at my house, where I store my stuff now, I don't really do any business there at all. It's just a storage area. And that would be basically the same thing out there because I'm working all over the place, but never at my house. And I, I'm just trying to work with the city, cause I don't want the city to be mad at me. I work for the city, you know? And so, before I was gonna buy it. I wanted to see what you guys were gonna say about it. If I could move my stuff out there. Cause if you say yay, I'll go get the money, the students will dump that building and move my stuff right out there. You know?
What other options do you have, Wade? What else have you been looking at?
Well, I don't wanna move out of town, that's the thing. I, I don't wanna move out of town with my stuff, you know, I gotta have it closer to me. And to older age, it's gotta own a place. I think. You know, like I say, I don't conduct any building at my house. And I wouldn't out there either, but then also like in Buell, I see they got a place where you can move by black dirt a little bit, you know? Or rocks or whatever, you know, well, I could also have something like that up there, cause where do you go now? Do you wanna wear a belt of dirt? Gotta go to Buell if I have Buell dirt. But I would be up to the city, I would use the parking lot, that's what I need to do, you know? You know? That's about all I'd say.
Thanks Wade, so Wade. As I hear you write then, as it's in like zone like right now, you would still then.
I think I could still use it, the same. You know, but I wouldn't wanna use it the same as I'm gonna. With if you guys say no, you know? Cause I don't wanna have a piss and match with nobody.
We appreciate that. And we don't want to either, Wade.
I agree.
Yeah.
Can I make a comment on that? Who owns the land just south of Interbase? That would be a good place.
I believe that's. John Heine, yes.
That would be a really good.
That's why I talked to Bill Lemare, I didn't know how much he had over here too, or Delmar, what he owned over there, but I think those would be. Really nice spots too. So we need, the board needs to decide if you want to go with the recommendation of planning a zoning board. Or if you want to. Change the position of the. Yeah.
If, if that's used as a storage. Does, does the, the land have to be changed from agricultural to, to commercial for, for them? I don't know, Wade, where do, where do you, where do you do your magic?
Have people's houses, yeah. Cause I'm ninety-nine percent think they do, or land.
Okay.
I haven't even, I can't do any wood carbon for two years now, but that I do in my garage behind my house. And then I, I think I didn't bring that paper with the county said I could do there, you know? On the ag, agricultural spot. But you could have a. You could store animals, you could have a sewage treatment plant there, you could have a gravel pit there, you could do all kinds of shit, you know?
There are some things that the board, which we still have jurisdiction over allowing certain things to be there or not. Still our decision.
And I guess.
That'd be, yeah, that'd be.
And I guess I don't feel that it would be a, a bad thing to have him move out there, and you know. Some of their, um. What they talked about really doesn't affect us, he has to have flood insurance. Well, that's on him. Doesn't Meisner have to have flood insurance? Isn't he just as low? We rezoned him, didn't we?
Either need to have flood insurance because they're vocal.
But didn't.
They need to have a Loma, a letter.
Right, but they said out there, it's a flood zone also. Well, you can get a Loma there too, but didn't we rezon Meisner too?
He has the same Loma issue.
Yeah. So, I, I mean, to me. Uh, I don't see a problem with him buying it because what is Gowan gonna do with it? He's putting a building out there. I'd rather see his equipment out there than thirty pigs. I mean, really.
There are many horses there.
Yeah, but you know, if you wanna be real nasty, you can put thirty pigs in there, make the neighbors really happy.
Well, we, we can still say no thirty, thirty pigs.
No, it's agricultural.
We could still, we still have jurisdiction.
I think if you have the, the zone agricultural, can't you put in what he wants?
We could still have some say, correct, Ashman?
No, I think if it's agricultural and you don't change the zone, you would just have to comply with the county's agricultural zone. Meisner was different because he's on the other side of the highway two hundred, which is our type for flood protection.
Okay.
So his wasn't quite the same. Go on to this right in.
But I guess I don't care if he has to pay for flood insurance, he wants to spend the money, you spend the money. But to me, if, if we can have some definite use on that property other than. Agricultural.
So I think they made a clarity about applying zoning people, if he leaves it as agricultural, he, all he has to do is comply with county agricultural. So.
But if there was to be any issues, we wouldn't have any teeth in it if we loved agriculture?
Well, we, it'd be, it's Ag A one. And in, within our jurisdiction, six things that permitted uses. With that vocation for, for those items. One, all types of farming and ranching operations excluding commercial animal feedlot. Two, permitted use, it's church and school. Three, golf course, but not including miniature golf course. Four, cemetery. Five, public parking recreational facilities and conservation area. And six, public sewage treatment facility, public sewage treatment facility. So those are the permitted uses, but then there's fifteen conditional use, uses for A one in our jurisdiction. Would you like me to read them?
Yes.
I can read them. Uh, one, single family dwelling unit. Mobile home with permanent foundation. Earthen and earth sheltered housing. Nurseries, greenhouses and roadside stand for sale of those products which are grown for produce. Uh, on the premises. Five, animal hospital and clinic and kennel. Six, home occup, occupant, occupation. Seven, radio and television tower and. Accessory buildings. Eight is mineral extraction and operation. Nine, salvage yard. Ten, industrial and commercial pipelines. Eleven, utility lines and facilities for public services. Eleven grain elevator, I'm sorry, twelve grain elevator. Thirteen, livestock auction ring. Fourteen, bulk fuel and chemical storage. And fifteen, railroad. Trackage and spur. So that's under conditional use. So that was touched on briefly at the zoning meeting. Uh, by one of the board members that talked about conditional use, which would mean that you would come up an agreement with, say Wade. On. How he. Uh, used that land or what he would put there. And that would be determined on a specific timeframe. Find right, Pat? And then the conditional use could be how to timeframe and specific guidelines on a conditional use, is that correct?
Well, I think you. Likely. The timeframe would be for the current owner, it's like the condition on typically, that's how your conditions appear, I don't know what Shannon's. Policy, but I think that's what Steve typically recommended. So long as the current owner receives a conditional use permit and that use continued. Then that's just kept in force.
So a conditional use permit could be. What if the, the parameters are not met or go outside of the?
I don't know if they're like it says.
Okay. Well, we'll need you to help us with that.
Well, yeah, so zoning.
I don't, now this is just the. The zoning district map.
Yeah, I think it's pretty.
Yes, very.
So this, this meeting that you guys held, Mr. Gowan did submit then to the zoning group? A desire to have it changed over to commercial?
Yep.
Okay.
He did not attend the meeting. Would the board like to? We could have Pat look into it more on a conditional use. If you want, we could.
He's not running a business out there, but he's, he's using the, the building or the land for storage.
Well, he's not running business out there, but he is running business out of there. Right? It's, it's still his business property.
Yeah, it would be his place of business.
Even though he doesn't do cash transactions, people can buy things out of his garage or whatever there. So it's his commercial.
So, so am I reading it correctly then, that with that being the case? Then that land would have to be deemed commercial for that to take place, Pat?
That's what the zoning board is.
Yeah, suggesting.
Yeah. And I'd be happy to, you know, if we said no. And left it as the board, the zoning board suggested to give Wade more time to continue looking, obviously, he's putting, putting a time effort into doing that.
Well, so I, I wouldn't really even do anything, I'd just go buy it and move all my stuff out there, you know? With the county, you know, as far as, it's right now, it's agricultural, that's through the county, right?
That's what they want, extra territory, I'm just saying. So how is that for a mention?
So without rezoning it commercial. The city could allow me to park my stuff there without rezoning it at all.
I don't know that, and that's, both, you'd have to have Pat answer that, Wade, I don't know. I don't know that. And maybe it'll take more time than tonight for Pat to look into it a little more for us, but.
Well, just from what you read, it's not a permitted use to.
Right.
To set up a business.
So, so that list is, is considered all inclusive in terms of what type of activities that one would set up a, a conditional use permit for that land to be used as? Anything falling outside that list of fifteen. Would not be deemed suitable?
Well, then you'd need a variance.
And the variance there would come from the county? No, it would come from here, okay.
It's interesting that you could have junk yards, um, bulk fuel, chemical storage, which could start dirt and rocks. Under the conditional business, so.
Would the board like to, direction that wanna go? You can always table it too. For the next meeting, have Pat look into it more also.
I think, I think I would, before voting one way or the other, I'd like to make sure that I have a complete understanding of what. As, as an agricultural piece of property. What, what options are available to a landowner if they were to, to do what Wade is hoping to do with that property? So, so I would make a motion that we, we table it, get some additional information provided by Pat. And then discuss it at a later date.
I do wanna make sure we address Wade's question though, is that if he bought that land tomorrow from Mr. Gowan. Could he park his equipment and store it there?
Well, that's, that's what I'm looking to understand, and I, and I feel like it may be, for, for me to be able to answer that question, I would have to. Either have direction from Pat or read through it myself and try to discern what the rules say on that.
Right, I think exactly.
Rather than have a motion to table, my preference would be to just postpone action.
Yeah.
Works for me.
Okay. Do you think you could give some information for us for the next meeting, possibly? Okay. Okay, so at this time. We're, we're postponing action till the next meeting? We need a, we need a.
We're not making a motion, we're just postponing.
Yeah, well, you know, telling those rules are the thing, if you table, then you're gonna take an option.
You're gonna make a motion to postpone action to a specific date.
Well, I guess if you want a set date, but otherwise, why would you even?
Okay. Alright Wade, we, we need more time, sorry.
So tomorrow is down there?
We'll call you if we don't.
Alright, thank you.
Alright, building permit, uh, industrial zone for Bill Lemare, and he's adding on to his storage units over. Across the, the road tracks, we do not need to. Give permission. I think this is more of a informative thing, is that correct, Marty?
Well, we did not case your building permit.
But there's no variances in this industrial zone?
But it's, since it is the industrial zone, it's the same as a commercial, you have to.
Okay. Is this gonna? Can you go back down further on this? And this will sit north and south?
Yeah, it's, it's going to be north and south versus other than.
Can you move your, your arrow to where we're talking about?
I think it's right, right there, is that this?
Just trying to understand.
That, that's an existing building. I think he's gonna go further south in the dark green area. Where they put all their dirt last summer.
I think it's all framed out already.
Is it?
I think I checked every side road off, I think it's already. I don't know, I understand.
Where do you think it's gonna be, Marty?
I, I don't stand.
I think it's gonna be right along the road there, south.
That's gonna be right here.
Right there.
I think that's, that's where he put all that dirt.
I think that really used to pile stolen. Well, we were going around down.
I'm on a road off there today, I thought it was all framed up for four months. We don't have a variance there.
Right. Do we still need a motion to approve, Marty? Okay. Motion by Pillar.
Second.
Second by Wolf, discussion. We'll call.
Pillar.
Hi.
Wolf.
Wolf.
Aye.
Pat.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf and Howard.
Aye, motion carried. A C condemnation process for ten nineteen Central Avenue North. You have some photos. Lauren Wiest did do the inspection. There you go.
It's not lived in right now, is it?
No.
No. It's not been lived in for a while. The windows have broken out.
The owners are aware?
Monty, is the owner incarcerated?
Incarcerated, yes. Basically, they were provided a notice included here. To have the property torn down for public safety was supposed to be done by the fifteenth of August, and they did not comply. The request is that you set a hearing because the next thing is a hearing for them to explain why it hasn't been done.
So in a situation where somebody is incarcerated that's the landlord or how do you, how do you feel about such?
Actually, as far as I know, the property is held in by.
Okay.
Okay.
And she has been, Shannon has been talking to her.
Okay.
So basically, we're looking at doing the, the hearing notice for September second, coming up to meet it.
So is the discussion tonight just informational for, for us?
Yes.
Okay.
And this will be same situation as the other?
Most scheduled the hearing, you don't have the opportunity to explain why it hasn't been done. And then you can order it condemned and as part of staff, remove it from the contract, so they don't have it. And the cost of sales.
If you have any other questions, you can call Sharon tomorrow too. Before that, that process. Questions? Okay. All right, moving down to reports. Water, sewer.
Questions reported this time.
Streets Cemetery.
Really, the only guy I got, and Dave just briefly explained me a little snap from this afternoon with the John here payloader. Not sure what all that, Dave, it was more detailed.
When the city employees are pushing up the tree pile, getting it piled up, the people dump and push it up. I think he was backing, backing up or whatever, kicked up a, a tree branch and actually punched a hole about that big in the transmission of a payloader, dumped all the food down there. It's sitting out there, yeah, just busted off the motor mount. Or they go on the transmission. So I got already all lined up to come pick it up to take it to Vis Mart to get us enough split on what's going to take to either put in a rebuild transmission or recase this one, depending on how much internal damage it did, but it's one of them fluke accidents.
Now, we pushed up the pile how many dozens of times?
For years and years and years, and it just picked up one of them logs, they were kicking under the machine, stood it up on end and it went up over the top and tore the motor mount off before they go in the case. Monty's got some pictures of that.
I didn't follow.
So we got that and the blade sitting out at the gravel site?
And the blade is sitting over at the gravel site, it's a bad motor.
I just wanted to bring that up just as a.
Yeah.
Sorry.
So we fired the employee after?
No, we put him in the street so he could see what kind of damage he did to them.
I don't think it was intentional.
No, it was, yeah, he called and said I got oil leaking out, that got obvious, and he didn't hear nothing. Weird mostly to see though. A little oil, shut it down in time, I mean.
Okay. And we still haven't had Joel here yet to look at the.
He was with Mike all day today. They weren't back yet at four o'clock when we went home, so I'll visit with Mike in the morning. So I've been busy looking at trees up until this point. Mike has been trimming and cutting trees.
You looked at those, those cottonwoods by Greensteiners Company?
They were looking at them today. They were going to look at those today, so. We'll see what they came up with. We've been working, starting, we finished painting the, the crosswalks and everything, we're starting on the parking lot strapping. So we got personnel to do it in dry weather, so.
You know, there's the thing Dave shared with me last week, they've got the box, dump box loose off the old truck, IH truck, so it's ready in preparation for.
Yeah, that's ready to lift off and settle. We were on the sterling when we traded that compact, it was after the side. When we want to go without a backup truck, how many months we want to go without a backup truck? I don't foresee any breakdumps with the truck we got, but we definitely would like to have that dump truck made and, and ready to go for a personal haul.
But worst case, if something does happen, Dave said.
We could probably borrow a Bueller's truck, I mean, we borrowed our spare truck in the past, and then years back, we've borrowed theirs or whatever. We'd like to get it done soon enough where when three are doing the transmission, if there's anything that's odd or whatever, he's got ample time to.
Okay.
To address this.
What do we have left for summer help?
They're leaving Wednesday is their last day.
Oh.
We have two left and they'll be done Wednesday.
Okay. Any, any other final stuff, Dave?
Dave?
No.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I just had one thing. I had a resident ask me on, I think it's Eighth Street in front of Arles Moss and Bruce Huber's, um, storage facilities, why there's no lights, streetlights. Um, there's one, I had Monty check, one on the corner, one way down the other corner. Um, and they just want to know why it's so dark on that road. So I just, if you want to look at it sometime, when it's dark out.
By Casey's shop, Ninth Avenue.
Oh, Ninth Avenue.
It's just on Ninth Avenue.
Okay.
My goal, I guess, like Tenth Avenue, that never had one too. And, and, and then that time, the owners had to come to the city and they begged for it, so.
And they just asked me why, as they said they're paying their five dollar street, uh, streetlight fee, they'd like to, I have a streetlight there, but just something to look at next time you drive down that street.
Where we're talking.
Yeah.
Casey, it's on.
The stop sign on the east end of town, I'm still getting a lot of, a lot of, I guess, comments about it, and now, now it's like a solar powered LED light. Where do we get that from?
We, we approved that. Did we approve to buy a, the light around a fifteen too?
You wanted to get the radar sign if possible.
Yeah, we were going to reach out and see if we could get a loner that showed the, uh, the actual speed.
D O P does not have one. The company that sells them was working to see if they could get me a loner for a couple of months.
And we were looking at a loner because those were like four grand or something.
Thirty-six hundred, yeah.
And that is a tough stop sign if you've lived here all your life. I've slid through it a few times. But with that flashing light on it, it really does stick out. I mean, you can forget and that'll, that'll definitely remind you at all times of the day.
Speaking of that, we got the crosswalk, can you do that?
Yeah.
So I guess when I have this, the residents that come to me, they ask me why.
Safety.
But there is more dangerous intersections in town here, and we've got a lot more racks at.
We can address, I've brought up intersection by downtown too. You know, that's, that's a tough one to see when you're coming off of First Avenue onto the main street. You know, I'm teaching my kids how to drive and you, you stop at the stop sign and you stop again and you look both ways and you look to the reflection in the window of the store. Yeah, I, I brought that up too. I think that's, you know, that's been a tough one. But if we, if we have citizens and we have people that are, I think we have other spots that are dangerous, we need to address them, but I've had, I've had nothing but good comments, and obviously the, we have different people talking to us, obviously. But I've had people.
And Mike, we're just concerned that they weren't handing out tickets yet because it's going to take a while if you've lived here thirty, forty, fifty years to get used to that stop sign, and I don't think they are.
I had one, when someone said that she owes, this lady talking, she almost rear ended the car that stopped because she's not used to stopping. So she was upset, she thinks there's a bunch of rear end accidents there, she thought, so that was.
Your comments are just basically asking the question why?
Yeah. I mean, so many people ask why, that's all I know.
The, the, the decisions were made on that, we, we had quite a lengthy conversation on, on safety and that when the, the youth are going through their driver safety programs and stuff, that it was hard even for the, the teachers that manned that particular process to explain who had right of way and all of that kind of stuff on that intersection. That was part of the discussion. So it was felt that by putting that sign there, it made it black and white.
Who blamed Jared? Tell us to do it.
He told us, he told us quite frankly to blame it on him.
You need to.
Speaking, speaking about lighting, I've had a couple of people that walk really early in the mornings that there's lights that are out in the underpass while I've stopped there in the mornings going to work when it's dark, when they're still illuminated. There are a few lights in there that I know the ballasts are failing, but they'll be off for a while until they cool down, come back on, go back out.
Go to the tunnel?
Yeah. So usually you go down there, they're always on, but there's times when some of them are off, the next time you go, they're on. So there is some issues with the ballast or whatever. I know one time I touched base with Mark Wilson and he suggested, you know, eliminating the ballast and converting them all over to the LED. Where they take the ballast, put the LED bulbs in, they're a lot cheaper and all, had to try to repair the ballast and that, but so that might be something you ought to look at, addressing or. Like I said, you go along down there one day and they'll be all lit up, next day maybe two of them are all, next day they're back on again, so they're kind of hit and miss. So there's some issues going on with some of them lights going down.
So we should maybe get a bit from Mark to see what that costs. Any else under Streets Cemetery? I've got one comment under Cemetery. I did, I did get a call from gentleman in Buella, said that the, the churches in Buella are giving their church cemeteries to the city. They no longer want to maintain them. They're filling, they're, they're filling up quickly and they, they, that sounds, that didn't make, sound bad, but they're running out of space. Yeah, yeah, running out of space. And this gentleman who works closely with a lot of churches said that, he's heard that from a few, he's in churches too, that they're, you know, one, they don't have people to maintain them. And if they give their cemetery to the city, then the city has to maintain them. Buella charges two hundred dollars per cemetery lot, we charge a hundred dollars per cemetery lot. And maybe that's something we want to look at, is changing that. Down the road, you never know, we might be the recipients.
And get the word started and getting back that we have to maintain that, that would be most important.
So just a little food for thought. Finance busing.
Public library board need that new. Tuesday here, we'll plan to go to that. That's all I have.
Police fighters, sports.
Nothing at this time.
Buster?
Well, you've driven by fighter, you see they got raptors up tonight on the, on the garages, so it's good.
Outside of law.
Right, you see that there looks like some pretty good partners now, it's pretty shaping up, so.
What's that you could see over there now?
You know, Sandy told me she handed out another application here the other day, and I think if that one ends up going in, that would be thirteen.
So, so the age restrictions have been removed from, from the applications?
You know, you know, internally, we still would like to see it fifty-five and older eventually, you know, maybe it'll get to that point sometime. But for the time being, maybe we don't have it, and it, and it isn't restricted per se, and if we, basically what it was is that when we did the application. We got some extra points for doing the handicap stuff, you know, but not anything necessarily with age, we didn't get any additional points for age.
But it's all regulated through the state, how it's financed, so they would say you can't have age, you know? Yeah, so it's all, have lesson from, from Mr. King's office, Julian.
I was just curious, people had asked me the question, they said, geez, it sure looks like some, you know, younger people there and have heard some people that are living there. And I thought it was supposed to be, and I said, you know, that was originally what the hope was.
What the hope was.
Okay.
That was a good response.
All right. That's it, Buster?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Under mine, I just want to mention that tomorrow night, obviously, the pitchfork will do. And please try to attend that if you can. Last week I got a call from Brad Quinnett at Roof Rider Electric. And Brad said he read our minutes from our last meeting and was shocked at our electrical, um, bill at the fire hall. And he said that there's got to be some other issue over there other than just windows and doors leaking. And he said about ten years ago, he walked through with, at that time it was Dan Wetstein, and talked about different heaters that they have on in different locations and peak, peak usage on some stuff and, and, and Brad said he would love to walk through with, um, if it was Casey and Jason or whoever, just to, he said, we, we should be able to get that net and, yeah, we should be able to get that down a lot. So there's no reason it should be like that, he goes, and, you know, maybe there are some issues with, you know, twenty below outside, we have a car accident, we have, you know, a truck that goes out, a rescue vehicle that goes out in the fire hall, the doors left open for an hour. Do they get shut, Dave, when they go out?
Yeah, they get shut in the winter. We, we had the summer, we tried to close them.
Okay, so he was looking at the annual consumption or was he looking at like last month that?
Annual.
Okay.
Annual.
And, and there, there's a lot of corrective actions as we've talked about that have been taking place, so.
But he thinks he could help more.
Okay.
Yeah. I said, we would welcome that absolutely to go through there with Casey and, and maybe Dave, Nancy, but we would definitely, whatever help we get, that should not be that high.
I think they're already going through a lighting retrofit. And, and the windows were all approved and the doors, they get them put in there and stuff like that, so. Put another set of eyes certainly.
Yep. All right, moving down to twelve A, Blue Cross Blue Shield renewal. Monty? Has worked some magic again?
Yeah, no, don't look at me. They just changed their mind, we have a point eight percent increase on our family, our, our health insurance premium, vision and dental are no change for the next year effective October first. So basically, this doesn't change any of our plans or their coverage limits or any of that stuff. So I just need your approval to go ahead and sign the agreement and keep it going for another year. Make a motion to.
Allow Monty to sign that agreement.
Motion by Pillar?
Second.
Second by Hack. Discussion. We'd sign before they change their mind, so.
Make it contingent upon twenty-five year deal.
Uh, roll call.
Pillar.
Aye.
Hack.
Aye.
Stern.
Aye.
Wolf.
Aye.
Wolf and Howard.
Aye, motion carried. Monty, is that due to us just having, you know, being helped? Motion carried. Monty, is that due to us just having, you know, being healthy?
It has, it has to do with our, what do you wanna call it, experience racial type stuff, yeah. Is, is it in our demographics?
Independent to us, or are we part of a consortium?
No, that's independent of us, you know, interesting.
So I know a few other groups in town that have had fifteen plus percent rates in theirs.
Yeah, and waters and schools are over seventeen.
Twelve B, appoint alternate judge.
Judge Stern has been working on this for quite some time to find someone, when he's unavailable or he has a conflict that can step in and serve as an alternate. Mr. Beauchamp used to do it, I believe he's trying to get away from doing that. So he did contact with Mr. Kripzbach from Matt's, and he would be willing to serve as alternate judge for the city of Haysen. So clearly we don't have any limitations as to where somebody resides.
Okay.
And we need to give our blessing of pardon?
Yes.
And this is someone obviously that Judge Stern knows and has sought out?
Yeah. And he has attended the conferences and the training.
Okay, we would need a motion. Motion by hack. Second. Second by Stern, discussion. Roll call.
Hack?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Pillar?
Aye.
Whoa?
Aye.
Over and over.
Aye, motion carried. Twelve C, roof repair estimate. Uh, for those of you that don't know, last week we had water coming down the walls of the bathroom. We had water coming down in the middle of the small hall, there's a kind of a vent in there, water's coming through that. And for the first time, we've had water in the big hall coming down the, the wall too, uh, by the.
By the kitchen door.
By the kitchen door, yeah. And Pam was on, hmm, that's, how do I say? On edge, yes. Uh, she was doing all she could. Monty's got pictures up here of the, of the roof, you can see water was sitting. There was a large crack in the, in the block, um, also kind of by this, right by this nearest, yeah, by Monty's cursor. And, uh, so they did, they did put some hydraulic cement in there to caulk it up, and, uh, to fill those spots, but, uh, the, you can see the big square vent in the middle, that's, that is over the middle of the small hall, and that, that's where it was coming through there somehow, but. Dave did go up there, um, and this one area was plugged pretty good.
Yeah, this, this roof here is good, that section there, there's one drain in the corner. And there is some spots, I've given Monty pictures in the past where it holds water long term, and what happens is we start getting moss, and algae growing up there, and when it dies off or it rains again, it breaks loose and it all falls over, floods the drain.
So, so the estimate gives us a, a replacement roof up there that eliminates all settling, settling water and all leaks with a guarantee?
The only guarantee of the flat roof is that it will leak again.
Yeah, it will put, like the other roofs all have a slope to them, so they will use insulation to build that slope so that everything drains to the, to the drain where it's supposed to. They'll also put a membrane of both walls all the way up under the top clashing, so there isn't any of that exposed brick that cracks or those other joints down along here, or they just have basically have shingles. But it will still be a, it will still be a membrane with, yeah, it'll be a membrane with the gravel over top, yes.
And we, we've talked about it in the past, but just putting a sloped roof on, you know, stick frame, stick built, you know, if it's sloped from the front of the building to the north side, to the back, you know, it was a couple hundred thousand dollars, you know, last time we looked into it.
Yeah, stop influence city, said he gave us three times what this is. But with the insulation, they, 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 they will have pitched them?
Yeah.
To, from the front to the back or to the drains or?
Yeah.
Yeah.
It's hard, you can't tell on here, but they ended up doing that on this roof section. They actually sloped it from the front to the back corner here, by just, by just adding insulation, shook different level. And the, the large hall roof actually slopes all toward the west where the drains are, along several spots. This one was just never addressed for some reason.
What is the total on this one?
Thirty-six. Oops. Could we just receive one bid on this?
Yes.
Are we obligated to get any more than one bid?
Well, it's kind of a specialized mark, so we're not obligated to.
We can, if you'd like, we could try to find someone else if you don't want to see another bid, you could try to find another. You know, if it rains hard again or several days, we could have some more leaks which are manageable and.
I just wanted, there is, of course, a record that, the question was asked and it was, so when people say, well.
I went in, talked to my friend Joe who does roofs.
Does that big van that's in the middle of the roof there, and you'll see it going all, does that get used or ever get opened, or is that something from years ago?
The van is actually still connected when you got one switch in there. It turns on the bowl or, and that's crazy.
It is noisy, but doesn't work, yeah.
Yeah, so we can delete that out, that just eliminates a big leak area if you're gonna rebuild that, or if there's, if there's something that ever gets used. Eliminated.
We, we blattered over skylights and stuff over at English Lutheran. So I mean, it's, you could, you could frame, you, you could take that out, frame that up and then blatter over it, too. If it's never being used, maybe it's thus justifiable to, to do something like that.
Want to check the twin city, Monty? Change the bid?
Yeah. My experience has been wherever you've got any type of, entryway in there, yeah, it's, it's a, just a matter of time for, likely it's gonna leak again with expansion and contraction and aging, so. Okay, I'll get it home. So then we would wait on that information and then address this at that time. Okay.
Would the board like us to seek out another bid option? See if there's another person?
These, this is a, an organization we've used in the past.
So the school uses on their clarify us. Okay, get the information back from Monty's. Alright, down to twelve D. Property real estate sale, so this will be the, you'll see up there, Monty put the description together for this property back here that we worked out on. And we have our, everything we have into it money wise, and we want to put that out for bid. Sell that property, and actually the grass is growing really nice right now.
This is what our intent had been.
Yes.
In the beginning, yeah.
Yeah.
As I said in the notes, I know there's interest, I've had, I've had at least two people stop and ask me about it, and I know Shannon has had people stop and ask. So how does, how does what we have into it versus what the market value might be, how do they compare to one another? We have more into it. Well, I don't know that Shannon has adjusted the value yet, since we have it, everything's basically zero out. The value of it before true and full, I wanna say, was around thirty thousand, that was with the house. Yeah, with the house and the. And now it's a lot, they're nice garage. Right? Yeah. We've done basically fourteen thousand eight hundred dollars in, in direct costs, with just some taxes and those things. That's why I thought it'd be funny.
So when you rounded it to fifteen, you were just looking to cover the city's?
Yes.
Basically.
Clean it up and get rid of it, and it's not zoned commercial, so we can't put a business there. Why?
It is commercial.
Oh, it is? Oh, that's good, I guess, I'm sorry, I should have been making a joke here, I was thinking about Wade's. Maybe Wade wants to buy it then.
That's old commercial?
It is zoned commercial, yes. Because of the business.
So there's other lots on that block there, so that's also.
That whole block.
Well, you know where Ryan Booth is, that's, that's a lot of commercial too.
Does Wade know about that place?
No, maybe we want to let him know.
I didn't realize that was so important.
I didn't either, actually. I guess I didn't repost that. So we can put a, actually we can choose what we want for a minimum bid on this property.
Well, I think, I, I think it's appropriate to, as a minimum bid, cover your costs. I, I guess I, I didn't pay close enough attention to that, that that's what's gonna be what the price would be on the for sale documentation. It's just gonna be the minimum bid and then we'll auction it off? No, no, we'll just accept, we'll accept the highest, the highest.
What did you accept?
Good.
That's something we should maybe mention later.
I will. I don't think it's gonna be big enough for what he wants. So are we all good with the, this listing, the way Monty has worded?
Yeah.
Monty, do you want a motion to approve this? Okay, approval of bills. Thanks, Pat.
Motion approved.
Motion by hack.
Second.
Second by pillar. Discussion. Roll call.
Hack?
Right.
Pillar?
Aye.
Stern?
Aye.
Whoa.
Aye.
Over and over.
Alright, motion carried, we need adjourned, thank you.